Let's start with a pledge of allegiance, please.
Everybody stand, join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zealous symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
That was great. Thank you very much. They moved the flag. It confused me for a minute. Let's start with a roll call, please, Joan.
Chris Mortensen.
Here.
Charles Long.
Here.
Michael Shaw.
Here.
Priscilla Benali.
Kevin Mitchell.
Here. All right, we're all here. We have a forum, so we'll get started. Ms. Hanks, you're in the seat of honor today as our superintendent, Mr. Hyatt is out of town. Are there any last-minute changes to the agenda before we vote to approve it?
President Morton said yes. I do request that we make modification to the recognition so that we can recognize our Rema and Tohachi state track champion. If we could do that after the Gallup High Girls softball?
Okay. Any objections, board members, or any questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as modified.
Motion to approve the agenda as modified.
Well, I think she beat you, Charles. Roll call, please, Joan.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. All right, we're good to go with the agenda. And with that, I'll turn the time over to Ms. Hanks for this first part of the recognition portion.
Thank you, President Mortensen. As was mentioned, Superintendent Hyatt is not able to be with us today, but he did want me to give some words to our Gallup High softball girls' champions. Congratulations to our 2024 Gallup High Girls softball state champions. Your incredible achievement has not only placed you at the top of high school softball in our state, but has also etched your name into the history books. I believe your success these last few years makes you the best softball team from our school district. I extend our heartfelt thanks to the athletes for their hard work, perseverance, and excellent representation of Gallup High School in our community. Your determination and team spirit have made us all proud. A special recognition goes out to our head coach, whose leadership and dedication have brought unparalleled success in such a short time. Your guidance has been instrumental in shaping these athletes into champions. I also want to give appreciation to the parents of our athletes. Your unwavering support has been crucial to the team's success and the overall development of your children as both students and athletes. Congratulations once again, and thank you for bringing honor to your school and our community, Superintendent Hyatt. With that, we are very excited for all of our recognitions today. It is wonderful to see our student athletes from Rema and Tohachi with us today. Our New Mexico School Board Association Excellence in School Achievement Award. Our individuals who have helped to shape the new heritage language curriculum that's really going to make a difference for our students in this district. And our graduation coordination that will be our last recognition. With that, I ask the board to come down to the front for the recognitions.
President Morton, members of the board. First, I want to introduce our new Director of Athletics, Lauren Senna. He's going to be passing out the awards today. So, welcome, Mr. Senna. Also, students, as we call your name, if you'll come down here, start here, and then you're going to go around and shake our board members' hands and stay up for a picture, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Montano. Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, members of the board, Deputy Superintendent Ms. Hanks, and parents and everybody here today. It is a great honor to have my first sort of official business as Director of Athletics, to be able to have this kind of opportunity. I'm really excited this year. I was previously the principal at the Ruahai, and then I was the interim principal at Gallup High. And so, I did have the great honor of being principal while these young ladies were battling it out on the softball diamond. So, this was really exciting for me. Some of the stuff I'd like to talk real quick about this team this year. They started off the season, they went to Arizona to play in a tournament at Bullhead City, the Tournament of Champions. And, you know, it was a little rocky start to them, losing their first four games, but they were playing California teams, teams from the Los Angeles area, some really big teams. And they held their own during that competition. They did win their last game. And then they came back, and they really showed tremendous success when they returned to New Mexico. They played in the Rio Rancho Tournament, and took, I believe it was third place in that tournament, only losing to Alama Gordo, which was the five-day runner-up. And so, they really beat some top-quality teams. While they're there amongst the five-day teams that they beat this year, they beat Farmington, Rio Rancho, Hobbs, and Volcano Vista, all amongst the top teams in five days. So, when this team comes out winning as state champions, they beat and could have possibly been the state champion of all of New Mexico. So, that is really an honor and accomplishment for this team. In the road at the state tournament, they started off with Portales here in the opening round, a little bit of a tough game for them, as they pulled that one out 2-0. Then they went on to the state tournament. They beat Belen. They met up with Artisia. And then they got Silver City in the semifinal game into the championship. And Silver City was a revenge game, as that was the team that they lost to last year in the state championship. So, that was a really big, the emotion that you could see on the field when these girls won that game was just amazing. And then they went into the championship day, and in the first game, they were playing Artisia again for the state championship. They lost that first game 1-0. And if you look at the stat sheet, they won in every department into that game except the score. Artisia was lucky enough to get a home run, was the only scorer of the game. But otherwise, we were able to hammer them down. But they went into the second game, right away the girls came out, and they weren't going to leave any doubt. They scored a couple of runs in the first inning, a couple more in the second, and they took control of that game and ended up winning the state championship 7-1. And that was an exciting battle. It was an exciting day. It was hot out there. But the fans were something special, as Gallup fans always do, turn out. There was a lot of people out there really rooting these girls on. And so, I think a lot of that success really comes from that push of the fans, the parents, really getting the extended families out there to really give them that push to that championship. So, it gives me great honor to introduce the state champions this year. So, we're going to start with, we're going to go in numerical order. So, we're going to go with jersey numbers. Number 00, Madison Martinez. Number 1, Brenna Basenti. Number 2, Morgan Balone. Number 3, Tiara James. Number 4, Crystal Monufol. Number 5, Snada Hayne. Number 6, Jasmine Monufol. Number 7, Victoria Zalate. Number 8, Jayla Green. Number 9, Mackenzie Notta. Number 10, Leah So. Number 11, Reana Chi. Number 12, Stefanisha Charley. Number 13, Honey Willoughby. Number 14, Cheyenne Spencer. Number 15, Lanelle Notta. Number 16, Shoshana Smith. And number 99, Yanava Hardy. Now for the managers, who play a very vital, important role in everything that happens with these teams, Viviana Alvin. And Bradley Joe. And now for our coaches. Assistant Coach, Adrian Monufol. Chris Balone. Filmer Martinez. John Green. Maria Monufol. And your head coach, William Haynes. So, Coach Haynes and his staff is going to have a good job replacing, as they have 10 seniors on this championship team. But they do have some good quality onions that did play a lot of innings. So, once again, congratulations to the Gallup High softball. All right, next up, we have our track athletes. This year, we had our small schools track meet, and we had a few members place runner-up, and we had one state champion out of the district. So, we're going to go ahead and start off with Rema High School. We had two young ladies who placed runner-up this year. We had, who's not here with us today, from Rema is Ms. Keena Turney. And she was the runner-up in the 800-meter run, I believe. And with us today, we have Kancy Clausen. And she is the triple jump runner-up. She jumps 29 feet 11 inches. And this is a senior, and she's had a very great career at Rema High. She has made it to the state championships every year and had place. And this was her best showing in the triple jump this year with the runner-up. So, she's going to be heading out to, I believe she said, CNN to college. Congratulations. And our final athlete recognition goes to Tohachi High School. This young man is the two-time defending state championship, champion in the 800-meter run. He is signing this week to go run track at Western New Mexico, and that goes to Jared Peterson. Congratulations.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, we have some more recognitions. So, if I could keep you down on the floor level, we will start our next set. So, the Board of Education nominated this teacher with Mr. Hyatt. It's an Excellence in Student Achievement Award. It is presented by the New Mexico School Boards Association in cooperation with the local school board of education in recognition of the outstanding role played in improving student achievement. The school board chose from Tohachi Elementary, Mr. Stacy Bedoni. He is a first-grade teacher at Tohachi Elementary focusing on primary grades. In ice stations and reading, he has got one of the top scores in the district. He is making Tohachi Elementary stand out from the norm and shine. Lots of communication, according to his principal, in collaboration with parents and his peers. He leads almost all staff meetings. He works with other teachers to improve their craft. And one thing you would notice about Mr. Stacy Bedoni's classroom is there are no discipline issues. That's because he is one of the most extremely organized teachers you will ever meet. Without further ado, I present our Excellence in Student Achievement Award to Mr. Stacy Bedoni through elementary. To Tohachi Elementary. Congratulations, Stacy. Now time for your pictures. From the beginning of the year to the end of year, Mr. Bedoni's ice stations test, he was the highest-growth teacher in the district. Some good stuff there, Mr. Bedoni. Our second recognition, ladies and gentlemen of the board, is for our HLC teachers, our Home Language and Culture teachers. They've been spending the last two years developing three-week language assessments to assess our students on their progress with the Home Language and Culture program. One of the things I'm most proud about this, and Ms. Sanchez, our director, is most proud about is Dr. Furlan Clark and DODI are wanting our curriculum. We have the standout curriculum for the Navajo Nation and Navajo language. So, we are getting recognized for that, and we have meetings this Wednesday, just to tell you, we've been meeting once about every two weeks, working with the DODI on how to transition this curriculum out of our district into the larger Navajo language community. So, first of all, these teachers have been working two years on this. Our first teacher is Ms. Anton. Outstanding, Ms. Tom. In Inney Hills Elementary. Jacqueline Billy, Through Elementary. Ethel Ellison, Stagecoach Elementary. Bernadine Cody, Raymond Elementary and Raymond High School. Velina Hayden, Crown Point High School. Shindera Largo, Jefferson Elementary. Let's give them a round of applause. The teachers have done an amazing job with curriculum design, and I think they understand more about the curriculum now than anybody has known in this district the last couple of years. Thank you so much.
One last recognition. I'd like to address the board. Is that okay? Okay. Yat e danos kodo, eh sheha kon. Awards ni hitra daso ni iki, bahe tanitsen. Di yiniki e, lse bahe nsen. E de, djonachai ilado, nihi, nihi sh, nihi shashtanocholha. Okoea, hut diya. This is my final year with Gallup McKinley County Schools. I'm retiring, so that's why I wanted to be able to say something. Ni hitinadano cheniki ea, yat e sen sakha ni chnedo. Senaha bitni bashish chindo, kiya ani e da shitche. Adotkatnisani e da shenale, akoyan bitto tene i, isina sha. I have been with the district for 25.5 years. I started here with the administration when there was a program called NTC. And then thereafter, one of the executive directors believed in me that I could become a teacher, and I told her, "No, are you crazy?" And she says, "No, I'm not crazy." So, she was one of those ladies that paid for my tuition, paid for my books, and she believed that much in me. And so, I'd like to thank Gallup McKinley County Schools also for hiring me, putting food on the table for my family, and being there and supporting us in our program. We've been in this Navajo language program for quite a long time. And I think Georgia and Ethel were a part of being at the beginning. And, you know, it's been a great adventure for me, and I really enjoy being here. I'm going to miss my staff or the people I work with. I have my principal here, Rebecca Apel, and I thank her for supporting me. Mr. Anton over there, and Ms. Sanchez. Thank you for believing in our program, and I pray that it'll continue to grow and improve because we've worked really hard. And I'd like to thank all of you for being here and helping our school as well, you know, and making the right decisions for our students out there. Thank you, Javana. I've been working with her for a long time, too.
One more recognition today. Dr. Jason Wayman has served as the Director of Instruction for all high schools for the 2023-24 school year. This is after five years of service to the district. He took the initiative to organize the 2024 high school graduations, which involved reviewing and correcting all program information, ensuring all materials were ready, including the stage, chairs, floor mats to protect the turf, and speakers for our sound system. And if you did not notice, the speakers were amazing this year. Student audits were conducted throughout the school year to make sure every student was prepared for graduation. They knew their graduation before December of this year. Attended all practices to ensure glitches were corrected before the primary ceremony. So, the Board of Education and District Administration would like to thank Dr. Jason Wayman for his hard work and commitment to our 2024 graduation cycle. Thank you. One last round of applause. Thank you, members of the board. Thank you, Mr. Wayman, Dr. Wayman.
Mr. Mortensen, I'd like to say something real quick.
Give me one second, Mr. Mitchell. One second.
Hold on.
Unless it's about Tohachi on their way out.
Hold on.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you for all the athletes that are here today. I appreciate seeing all of you and being able to congratulate you. I don't know, was it 10 seniors that are leaving from our softball team? I'm not too sure if any of you have signed anywhere or are going to continue in the sport of softball. And if there is, you know, I really want to say that I wish you so much luck. And the same with our Tohachi state champion, Jared. He's going to be continuing on. And it's so good to see that sports can help you students to achieve a higher education. So, really take that into consideration and do the best you can. And, you know, we expect great things out of all of you. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Mortensen? I would like to also add a couple of words. One of the things when I became a board member, one of my passions that I had, and I even got in trouble for it, were one of the board members in the past, was promoting our language and culture to our classrooms and to our classroom. You know, there was a person that once told me, you know, if I would stop talking about it, if I would stop implementing it. And because we're always talking about it, and I'm always talking about it. And they were pretty upset. And one of the things that they said, I told them was, "Listen to what I'm talking to you. I'm talking to you in English. I'm not even talking to you in my native tongue." I wish I could learn more. And that's what really pushed me to drive our Navajo language and culture, even though people in the higher up did not want to believe in it, did not want to respect it. But as a board member, I kept pushing. Hearing it, it reminds you of your elders. It reminds me of my grandma, my dad. And I'll keep pushing, and I am so thankful the new administration and this board continues to assist us in that. Yaket Dunzen. And I appreciate Mr. Bell for saying we're going to develop this curriculum, and we're going to move to an assessment. And it's not only Gallup McKinley County. I was at the New Mexico School Board Association Conference last week. Cuba wants... Cuba wants it. I raved about how we're implementing the curriculum and into our assessments. And there's other school districts out there that are not affiliated with Gallup, I mean, that are not affiliated with the Navajo Nation that also want to look at our curriculum. So I'm so thankful that we are that bright light that's shining out there for our language and culture. And thank you to all the teachers.
Mr. Mortensen. I just also wanted to say to our teacher, our middle school teacher at Tohachi Middle School, Mr. Stacy Bedoni. You know, we are so very lucky that we have such a great teacher. You know, I've heard so many great things about him and I just wanna say that I hope he continues to do everything he does to ensure that our kids are getting the very best. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Long, do you, I'm sorry to put you on the spot here. I don't know if you have any words of encouragement or anything you want to say about this heritage language stuff. This is, it's so exciting to me, you know, just seeing, this is a culmination of generations and generations and generations of folks out there. And to see these fine ladies, these educators, and to imagine the generations that they'll be affecting going forward. I just, I didn't know if there was anything that you would like to say as well, Mr. Long.
Thank you, Chris. And those in the audience. Kua shahoh aki. And I guess the thing I wanted to say is, when I became a school board member, it was kinda strange to have a school district teaching our language. Cause when I was growing up, I went to boarding school. And we were never allowed to speak our language. So many times I would be standing in a corner with a bar of soap in my mouth because I spoke Navajo. And but even then, I continued to speak Navajo. Because I think the language that we have is a wonderful language. It's a language that won World War II. If there was no Navajo language, we might have all been speaking a different language. But our language is what gave us freedom. And if you look at the code talkers, the code that they use, it was codes that were pretty much developed using the weapons that our military used. And some of us, you know, myself being a veteran, we talked about if we ever entered into another war, we would probably base another code, but maybe based on animals or whatever. But the Navajo language is something that can be done in a lot of ways. And I thank the teachers that taught our kids Navajo. But one thing that I think we really need to do is go back to, let's say, fifty years ago or maybe even longer, when our Navajo people at the time spoke language, which is not familiar with us right now. Biza tlahotat e ne. Tlahot a ala de yorjin de ilkadan. Ne huilte gona asde eh dan. Duwi whot belaht shen eh nihitene. Nihizad nleniki tlahot aye yatahlkane. And I think that's something that would be good to go back to. You know, very often I hear a speaker, a Navajo speaker, you know, mention a word or speak a word that is not familiar with us today. The language of the Navajo people has gone through changes. Koet eh. Ashinltsakoa ado inda eh ya. The language that we speak on the New Mexico side is a little bit different from those in Arizona. Akot a eh kehuit eh koet eh. Akon de. Naxalshin danoskeniki. Dooshnane danoskeniki. Ashon de nihizad akchabayo nahtako. Benasi ikhat olel. Aere benachin le daht erzin olel. Du aere benachin zedalhano shen eh ya. Tlatirilni loet eh. Chokonzate eh pei ikha. Epe nina eh ya. Tokhre rolenu chashon de. Ye ko inxalshin bintanoskin. Zedal ye ko eh ya bedahol ahta bedohne. Koje nimetsa koje. Krima puitat at eh du olabeditne. Arizona je twushchine. Akot a, you know, small differences in how we say words. Ako eh khaegi lto baekonasen ashon de. Akoli eastern chiko. Kehuit eh nikii. Nlele choljishlo nahtani danleniki. Do narey chosdalche. Naket eh nikii. Tlahot a dan chojin eh eh shilapela. How they refer to us, those living in Eastern Agency. Tla binashado shen hitodeshne. Eh koet eh. But thank you for teaching our kids, teachers and nleniki. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mortensen.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Real quick sort of thing.
Yes, please.
I wanna say thank you to Mr. Anton and Mrs. Sanchez. I saw everybody that was up here at the GMCS Cultural, Heritage Cultural Fair. That was phenomenal and I appreciate all of you that participated in that. Mr. Hyatt and I, and even Giovanna couldn't stop raving about the projects, the different projects we saw on display at that time. And I invite my colleagues, if you haven't again, to attend because it was all done with a cultural aspect. So thank you very much for that.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Board members, if you'll indulge me, one more recognition we have. I'd like to, I'd like to recognize Mr. Bart Stanley, who will be retiring. Is that correct? Who is going to wear the corduroy jacket of honor when you're gone? Good. Agent. I know he was thinking of cutting my microphone off.
Make sure you pass all Kevin's information to the next person because he always was the...
We appreciate it. Bart is the glue here at our school board meetings and always makes sure and runs batteries around and makes sure things work well. And we appreciate him and we will miss him and wish him luck going forward. Please come back and visit us. We'll, you know, get you in here for public comment. You can tell us what you really think about all of us. We appreciate you. Thank you very much for all of your work. We really appreciate you. Thank you. Let's move on to our next...
Hold on. Hold on. Just make sure you let the next person know that they better answer my phone calls when I'm calling on a Sunday or Saturday.
The next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes for May twentieth, 2024 regular meeting. I'll entertain a motion, please.
A motion to approve, sir.
Okay. Second, Mr. Long. Is that you? Second by Mr. Long. Roll call, please, Joan.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Schaff?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Next item is our consent agenda. Items four A, B, C, D, E, and F.
Motion to approve consent agenda items four A, four B, four C, four D, four E, and four F.
Thank you, Mr. Schaff. Second by Mr. Long. Roll call, please.
Who's second?
Second by Mr. Long. Mr. Schaff made the motion and Mr. Long was the second.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yeah.
Well, first of all, I have a question on E.
Okay. 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 Go ahead.
Can we get some information on that, about the Project Bike Tech educational program?
Ms. Sanks, do you have any answers for us on that one, E, item four E? What's the question, Mr. Mitchell?
I just wanted to know what that is all about here.
Okay.
Sure, President Mortensen, Mr. Mitchell. This will be a new partnership and expansion of our current Bike Tech. Our clubs that we have at the middle schools, this will actually be a bike repair elective offered at Gallup High School. And so these students will go in, Project Bike Tech is gonna be our partner in this program. They're bringing in their curriculum and their curricular patterns. And so our students at Gallup High School will have the option of taking this as an elective for bike repair. Given the expansion of our middle school bike project, we feel that this type of elective would be very valuable both for our students as well as those in the bike program as well as those just wanting to learn more about the mechanics of bicycles.
Thank you.
Good. All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Schaff?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Next item down here is study circle. Is there any public comment for today? Okay, no public comment. And so we'll turn the time over to Ms. Sanks for superintendent report.
President Mortensen, members of the board, I've asked for help from our technology staff. What I decided to do is start a look back of all the amazing events that we've seen this year. And of course, I don't have enough time to include them all, but I highlight reel while I read a few statements for you guys to enjoy of some of our events from the past year. As we approach the end of another school year, I want to take a moment to reflect on the incredible journey we have shared together. This past year has been filled with both challenges and triumphs. And I'm continually inspired by the resilience and dedication demonstrated by our students, educators, staff, parents, and community members. Despite any obstacles we faced, we remain steadfast in our commitment to provide a safe, supportive, and enriching learning environment for all students. Together, we adapted new ways of teaching and learning, continued to embrace technology as a tool for innovation, and supported one another with both compassion and understanding. As we look back on the accomplishments of this year, we celebrate the achievements of our students whose curiosity, enthusiasm, and passion continue to inspire us all. Whether it be academic success, artistic expression, athletic triumphs, or community service initiatives, each accomplishment is a testament to the hard work and dedication of our students as well as the guidance and support of our exceptional educators and staff. I often say that our students are the best of us. And if you have not attended one of our academic, athletic, artistic, college and career-ready, or even one of our heritage language programs, just as was mentioned earlier, I challenge you to do so in the coming year to see these amazing students for yourself. I would also like to express my sincerest appreciation to each member of the Board of Education for your unwavering support, visionary leadership, and steadfast commitment to the success and well-being of our students in schools. I don't think we have ever been this successful and we will continue to grow and be even more successful as we continue to grow our strategic plan and all the supports that go with it. Your support has helped Gallup McKinley County Schools to provide new opportunities for our students, including innovative technology, engaging and hands-on learning activities, robust college career and civic activities, and we're even starting to see the building of new schools. None of that would have been possible without your advocacy. I am so proud to say that a hundred and twenty-two students graduated with career technical certificates on their high school diplomas. Sixty-two of our students graduated with an associate's degree along with their high school diplomas. We have also provided three hundred and thirty-seven paid internship opportunities. And I'm hopeful that these numbers will continue to grow as we see students graduating with certifications that allow them to compete locally and globally to achieve their dreams. As we see more students getting more opportunities at a young age to decide what their future looks like. Your guidance and unwavering advocacy have been instrumental in shaping our strategic plan, fostering innovation, and ensuring that every decision we make is the best interest of our students and our communities. As many of our educators prepare to embark on a well-deserved summer break, let us take this opportunity to reflect in our collective achievements, recharge our spirits, and renew our commitment to excellence in education. During the summer, staff will be working tirelessly to get ready for the next school year so that we can all return ready to learn. In the coming year, we will continue to build upon the foundation of success we've established, striving to create an inclusive, equitable, and empowering learning environment where every student can thrive and succeed. In closing, I extend my heartfelt gratitude to each member of our educational community for your tireless dedication, unwavering resilience, and steadfast commitment to the success of our students. It is through our collective efforts and shared vision that we will continue to inspire greatness, transform the lives of many, and make a positive difference in our world. I'm incredibly grateful for the privilege to work at Gallup McKinley County Schools and I continue to look forward to the opportunities that lie ahead. These are just a few of our memories from the past year, but I hope that each one of us can find a connection that grew and inspired us this past year. It's been amazing to see what we've done.
Thank you, Ms. Sanks. That was awesome. Your words stand alone. I appreciate it. My favorite picture in there was the one with the Coca-Cola polar bear. Who's that? Good. We have a celebrity in our midst.
That is the amazing Faith Line who is in the audience with us today. And I cannot say enough about her hard work and dedication for the social and emotional support to the students of our district. She is literally available to answer the phone at any time and will always make sure students are taken care of.
Awesome. We appreciate it. I'd like to direct your attention to our notices of communication down here with our calendar events for the next, I don't know, probably sixty days or so. You can look on there and get that stuff on your calendar. And so let's move into our new business. We've got some exciting stuff in here. So let's start with six A, and that's the budget. And for that, I'll turn the time over to Ms. Sanks again.
Thank you, President Mortensen. I'm also gonna ask my director, my lead director over accounting and business to come up to the microphone in case I miss step or miss anything. Mr. Chris Klein is definitely a valuable support to me, making sure that things go as well as they possibly can. I'd like to remind everybody again, we had another year with no audit findings and that is largely just...
Thank you.
You do have your packets and in there is some familiar items. So behind the red tab, you'll see that our vision, mission, and values, as well as our graduate profile, and also our graduate profile competencies and descriptors, which is something that we've added as an added layer to our graduate profile. As was mentioned previously, the decisions that we make are really founded in the strategic plan. And a budget is essentially your alignment of your priorities with your financial resources. And so the budget presented to you today will align to the strategic plan that the district has put forward. Behind the green tab, I did do a summary. And within this summary is just some of the specific elements. As many of you are aware, the state did give us a three percent increase, which was recently approved with our memorandum with the collective bargaining agreement with the union. We will remain at a hundred and ninety days of instruction and the current calendar is currently published. We will be getting the printed calendar soon for distribution. We will increase the minimum of teacher salaries and principals to meet the minimums as required by the state. The issues that we face this year is that the state really did not give us enough funding to implement these changes, especially the medical premiums and the insurance liability increases. So you're seeing double-digit numbers there, ten percent around fifteen percent. They only gave a six and a half percent to cover that. So as we looked at the budget, we made sure that anything that was moved or modified was as farthest away from the classroom as is humanly possible. New successes and supports, this past year has been really great for attendance. Our new policy... Our new policy and focus and the plans that we've had put together there has been very, very helpful. Um, we've been able to implement immersive technology in schools. The new dress code has been released and will be effective for the 24-25 school year, which will allow more student freedom. We continue to hear our student voices on that, on all the surveys that they filled out, and that change is largely due to their voices. Our, our, uh, focus on media coverage, making sure everyone knows what's going on in our district, and we launched the Elevate Magazine, which is coming out quarterly. We opened the U and M Child Care Center. We've expanded our cashless concessions, and we look to even more expansion in the new year as we find additional ways to make it as easy as possible to participate in our events. We've made changes to in-house security, bringing more staff onboard, um, so that the district continues to run its own direct security. We were very happy to celebrate the Blue Ribbon Designation for Lincoln Elementary and look to see many other schools doing something just as great. Um, the graduation equipment changes, as was mentioned earlier, Dr. Wayman was really, um, at the forefront of making sure that graduations went as smoothly as possible. I will tell you that he was doing everything from moving chairs to tying down speeches to chasing stray animals when needed. He was willing to do anything to make sure that our graduates had a great experience. We did implement digital transcripts, so anyone looking to get transcripts from the district, you no longer have to come into the main office. You can go online and get your transcripts digitally. Um, we continue to focus on our multi-layered systems of support, as I was mentioning, Mrs. Klein and her efforts have really expanded the social and emotional supports that we provide our students. And then the implementation of Magic School AI, which we recently had a presentation on, to really become a thought partner for educators in expanding the concepts of what can be. Many of the items on the ongoing support, which I will not read to you, you are very familiar with, and none of those have been taken away. They still remain our primary focus in ensuring that we're providing the best quality education for our students. In concerns and update, there have been, uh, ongoing issues related to award information, and I will let the board know that we are still getting award information as of today, as I am presenting this budget to you. Um, so I will bring back to the board for the first board meeting in July, any changes that occur from the plan that I'm providing to you right now. Those are largely to do with the Public Education Department, and they will make those changes as they see fit through the end of this year. There, there is also one thing that is very disappointing, so two sessions ago, the legislators did give salary parity for our heritage language teachers. Unfortunately, they are no longer funding that initiative. They are only funding it to 50%. The district, however, will meet its obligation and ensure those educators receive their salary parity, even though we are not receiving the funding for it. State reporting delays continue, as well as graduation rate reporting complications. And what I mean by that is the state has a very complicated system for reporting graduation rates, which leads to long-term embargoes. Um, I believe that we just received the first look at last year's graduation rate, so that every LEA can fight over whether or not their data is correct. Um, so it has been a challenge getting information from the state. I've included the updated organizational chart. Um, as was mentioned, one of our newest changes will be Mr. Sena over athletics, but you will see some, uh, new changes there, as well as departments continue to move around slightly. The initial unit value, as well as on page five, a comparison of our demographics year to year. We do like to look at that data, and we do monitor it throughout the year to see where our student demographics are. The training and experience data on page six, this is a multi-year graph that I provided to the board for many years now, as we see just the changing demographics of our educator population. And then there is also a construction update on page seven through 10, and as has been mentioned previously, there is no lack of construction and maintenance going on in the district. Um, we are seeing the near completion of Red Rock Elementary, and we've seen, we've seen the starting phases of Tohatchie High, thankfully. There are also some smaller projects you're probably seeing finish, uh, along with the football field at Tohatchie High, the softball and baseball field at Tohatchie High, um, and then looking out over the summer at some other repairs that are going to be necessary.
Um, Jovanna?
Yes.
I have a, so with the football field, I know what was included was, um, supposedly new bleachers, bathroom concession. When, when, when are we gonna, you saying that, is that gonna be soon?
President Mortensen, Member Mitchell, so I will say that the bleachers have had a delay on the vendor side, and so right now, we're attempting to negotiate if we can install them before we impact football season. If we cannot, we will wait until after football season, because I do not want to impact the year for that. Um, so we are just having a few vendor delays related to materials. Um, uh, many people may have noticed there was actually a fence up just prior to graduation, um, but then we removed it for graduation, so that the current bleachers could be used. Um, but we are very aware that whatever we do, we need to not impact the student experience as much as possible.
Okay.
Um, on page 11, the revenue and expenditures, there's only one thing I'd like to note really about this, is in the expenditures category. The state has been making some arbitrary changes about where we must code things, and they will no longer allow us to code professional development for teachers in direct instruction. We do have to code parent involvements in direct instruction, but we cannot put professional development for educators. And so it's gonna look very strange, because this is a significant change to the way that the state codes things, and I anticipate even as a state, that we are going to have some very strange-looking data because of this demographic change. And so what you may notice, it still encompasses the majority of the funds, um, but 21 to 24, along with 1,000, now is the largest piece of the pie, and that 2,200 change really is the reason behind that. Um, we have asked the department why they've made such a change, and really, the only explanation they gave us is because the feds told us to. Um, and the remaining section there, um, which is page 12 to page 29, are the individual salary schedules, which do reflect the 3% increase that was approved by the Board of Education, and that is for all classes of employees. Behind the blue tab, we have information about our outstanding debt, and I'd like Mr. Klein to talk a little bit more about that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Hanks. President Mortensen, members of the board, uh, as you see right here, our outstanding debt, I'm actually going to go down to the revenue bonds, because we just have the two. Uh, in 2021, we had a revenue bond for our RAYMA teachages. That project has been completed. And then, uh, in 2022, we issued a revenue bond for our teachages that were still in process for, um, you know, the Gallup High area. Uh, right now, our outstanding debt here, uh, we, the last two years, we had two bond sales for $2 million, and we are gonna have another one here in 2024 for another $2 million. We were actually going to be issuing that. Uh, we were gonna be presenting that to you at this board meeting, however, and speaking with our bond advisors, they actually want to push that back to October, so you see, um, underneath the schedule here, it says projected in August. That's actually, it's gonna be October now, so I apologize, but the reason for that is we're actually gonna have a premium payment on our bonds in August, so it's gonna clear up some of that bonding capacity. And then just each year, we still continue to see, unfortunately, a decline in our assessed evaluation, and so that's going to impact our overall bonding capacity. So right now, I think we were at 78% bonding capacity, which isn't too bad. However, we're being a little conservative in our approach up until 2027. So in 2027, we'll actually have 65% of our current debt mature, so that'll be freeing up a lot of that capacity. But in speaking with our bond advisors, we're just trying to do a little bit of a conservative approach, and so we'll be coming to you in September with that final bond sale, that $2 million. And, and then you see here, you'll see our 10-year history of our bonding capacity, and we're still, you know, we're still doing good, and we, we have a lot of projects that we're still, we're still seeing come to fruition, and so these bonds are gonna continue to help us, you know, see those projects come to fruition. And these, uh, the remaining pages here is just each, each, uh, bond for its entire, entire debt schedule, so the principal and interest payments, and so that's what you'll see for each one of those pages going forward. But I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, as it pertains to our outstanding debt and our bonds.
You seem pretty calm about the slow award letters. You don't seem stressed about that at all.
No, no, it's, just get used to it with, unfortunately, uh, with NMPD, you just keep, you know, we, all we can do is keep trucking along. But, you know, that's all, that's all we can do, is remain optimistic, and, you know, we have a great team here, and we're always gonna find a way to, you know, figure it out one way or another.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Board members, any questions down here for the, about this budgeting process or anything like that?
Yes, sir. Um, the question I had was, when, during the announcement, they usually have it, um, at the budget, the budget meeting for, um, what's it called, the, that percentage that we get for our students? What is that this year?
Uh, President Mortensen, Member Benali, if you look, um, behind the green tab on page four, um, the unit program of, uh, award is 3.22%. And if you look at page five, you'll see that that increase for us was only about $2.9 million. And so to implement 3% raises, 10% medical insurance increase costs, and 15% liability increase costs, as well as all other fixed costs due to inflation, i- it was not enough.
And one of the things that we talked about, um, before was there is no formula right now, or in this formula, there's nothing about at-risk or Native American students, correct?
President Mortensen, Member Benali, that is correct. So although the state recognizes under the Yasi Martinez litigation that at-risk students do include the Native American demography, they are still awarding that, that funding, that limited funding on an annual basis with no formula attached to it, meaning that the way that it is distributed is often decided by the Public Education Department. And they, what they often do is regardless of the size of student population you serve, everybody gets an equal amount. And so for a population such as ours, which is one of the largest Navajo-Zuni populations, um, you know, tribal populations with concentration of Navajo students and Zuni students, is, is very insignificant. Um, we may get the same award as another district who may only serve 30 or 40 students when we serve almost 8,000.
So is there anything that we can start planning on now to do legislation to make an awareness of that, um, at-risk that percentage that's not included in this? Um, because I think it's really vital that we, we also try to, to advocate for that at, in the legislative. Another thing I wanted to mention too was, it was kind of a hot topic when we were in the, um, Johnson O'Malley breakout session during our NSBA, and one of the things they were talking about was there's a group that has, um, collected funds from the Indian Education Act, but it wasn't enough to assist them with their program, so they were applying for additional grants to help them with their funding, um, for Indian education, um, culture. And so I don't know if that's also another way to, um, get additional assistance is through the Indian Education Act, but I just wanted to see if there's anything we could do legislatively to start talking about this.
President Mortensen, Member Benali, absolutely. Um, one of the things that I would like to talk about is that the Legislative Finance Committee is actually studying the state funding formula now, and although I was not allowed to be on that committee as a district participant, and if you're smiling, you already know how popular I am. Um, I did actually provide one of my counterparts, um, who is Martin Romine, they did have the NMASBO board as part of that committee, and so I provided him the analysis on the at-risk funding factor, um, that I have done and have provided to every Secretary of Education, every Legislative Finance Committee Chair, every, um, Legislative Education Study Committee Chair, basically anybody who would let me forward them my analysis to show that the at-risk funding formula is not, is not equitable. Um, and so we will continue through that advocacy, as well as legislative advocacy, to move for those changes. We believe strongly that the heritage language funding should be under formula.
With that, because right now, you said, and I'm so thankful that our, our, our district is doing that, is we only got 50% of the salary for our native language and culture teachers, and the other 50 we had to pay out of our own pocket. So what percentage of at-risk do you think we would at least need? I mean, I know it's not even built in here, but, you know, to, to sustain a district like us, what would be a good number that would really help our district?
President Mortensen, Member Benali, this is actually something that's being discussed as to what that component would actually look like, and I will say that one of my counterparts did advocate that it wouldn't be directly related to serving students, but be based upon the amount necessary to provide the program. Um, I, I fear that anything of that nature will get into those other categories that the state has for us. For example, the elementary PE, elementary fine arts, and elementary bilingual funding, where they often do not fund enough because of the factor that's allocated to them. Although the district does believe in all of those programs and ensures that all of our students have access to those programs, the state has not fully funded them. I'm gonna be honest, I've been with the district since 2002, and I've never seen it fully funded. And so I don't want it to fall into one of those categories. Um, but that is part of that discussion of making sure that as we make funding formula changes, they just don't worry about the funding that they're spending, but they're allocating resources not equally, but equitably, because we all realize that students in our state have different backgrounds and circumstances that they're coming from, and why we continue to funnel funding to the most, I would say, the, the most affluent parts of the state, it just cannot continue. Um, our students who have, um, significant need, need that funding, and we show it, because we spend our budget.
I don't know if it would be something to be talked about at the government-to-government, but that is where a lot of our tribal leaders from all across New Mexico come together, and just like it was with the Yasi Martinez and Impact Aid, you know, this would be another great topic for them to join forces with, because I think it's something that really affects our whole Native American population. And that government-to-government is something that is essential, because it brings everybody to the table at that point, too. Thank you.
Any other questions, board members? All right, well, if, uh, if there's no other questions, then I will entertain a motion to approve our operating budget.
Minister Mortensen?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to approve the district's school district's operating budget for school year 2024, 2025, sir.
All right, second by Mr. Schaff. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Schaff?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. I know that, that, uh, Mr. Klein, thank you for your work. We, I know that that, that is a tremendous, you know, book of work to get that thing put together. That and the audit are monsters, and we appreciate your, uh, you know, your hard work and that, and thank you very much. You should go home and go to sleep now.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. And thank you to Deputy Superintendent Hanks, uh, she's just a phenomenal leader and is there every step of the way for us as well. I appreciate you all.
Good, good. All right, the next item of business down here is 6B. Do you have some information for us on that, Ms. Hanks?
President Mortensen, members of the board, 6B is actually an annual update, as many of you are aware. Uh, Ms. Roxy Flanders will be retiring from the school district at the end of this year, and so we're needing to update our signatory contacts with the Public Schools Facility Authority, and that will be myself, um, our Director of Procurement, Catherine Chrysler, and Erin Cook, who is our new Director of Facilities.
So this is basically just to update our signature card?
That is correct.
All right, that makes sense. Board members, any questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Oh, whoa, whoa.
Go ahead, Charles.
Motion by Mr. Long, and, and the second by Mr. Schaff. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Schaff?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. Next item here is, uh, Next item here is some pre-approval of board travel later on in the school year twenty-four and twenty-five, to, to travel to the School Board Association meeting in Santa Fe for legislative session as well. If there's no questions for that, then I'll entertain a motion for that one as well.
Motion to approve a board travel to New Mexico State Board Association conferences and legislative session for fiscal year 2024, 2025.
Thank you.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes, sir.
I would like to, on number G, on G, letter G, where it says state basketball, could it just be state championship playoffs? Because as we saw today, we had cross-country champion here, we had our softball, and any other teams from our district that make it to state, rather than just saying basketball, because then I don't want them coming back and saying we're favoring one sport.
Mr. Mitchell, I appreciate your input on that, and I, when we get to G, I will let you make the motion, the amended motion for that. Do we have a second for C?
I'll second.
Okay, board, or roll call, please, Joan.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. Next one here, Javanna, can you explain what this, what this conference is, just to make sure we are all clear on it? Ms. Hanks, excuse me. Okay.
President Mortensen, members of the board, this is the National Indian Education Association Conference. This is an annual conference and provides government-to-government, at the national level-type activities.
Perfect, thank you, Ms. Hanks. As many of you will remember, anybody in the audience or on our board, I don't know, a year or so ago, when, when we made changes with the Indian Education Committee, our school board was, we, we took charge of the Indian Education Committee, and so this is the National Indian Education Association Conference, it's in California, and so that is, is for our school board to go and attend that. Is there a motion?
I'll go ahead and motion, sir.
Okay. And a second, anybody?
Second.
Mr. Mitchell, and roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. The next one is six E, this is about the National JOM Conference in Oklahoma. This is particularly important to our school boards, we're currently in a dispute with them about how the funding is, is, makes its way down to us after it's had a handful of people put their hand in the pot. We, we, we stand in need of some advocacy at this conference in Oklahoma, and I would appreciate a, a motion to approve this, and, and also some, some, some happy participation in this trip, and hopefully, hopefully see if we can get some traction over there with, with folks. So go ahead, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mitchell. Roll call, please. Oh, yes, sir, yes, sir. Excuse me, Joan.
I just want to make a comment.
Please.
Trip, you know, I think in the past, all we've seen is two individuals that normally go to all these conferences. I'd like to have the board members get a chance to go.
I, I think that makes a lot of sense. Would you, would you like to attend, Mr. Long, to this one in September?
That would be great.
Okay, so we got Mr. Long on the books for that one, we'll book him a flight to Durant, Oklahoma, and we'll, I guess, decide on the rest of the folks, whoever, after that, I mean, I think, I think this is an important thing, and if we're able, you know, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a bad thing for more than two people to show up to this. There's a lot of, a lot of work to be done in this regard.
I think we're still at an impasse with the Denobination on Johnson O'Malley.
Yes, we are.
And I've talked to Denobination President about maybe two weeks ago, and he said, I just signed the legislation on it, but I don't think, he's talking about the issue we have with Denobination, I think he's talking about getting the grant from, for Denobination from the federal government, I think that's what he's talking about.
Well, let's put our heads together and find out what would be the most effective way to approach this at the conference in Oklahoma, and see if we can get some results. Our students deserve, deserve more, and, and we, as we just went through our budget, we see it's playing to anybody that sees, we, we need it, we, we need it, and our students deserve it, and our students are owed that, so. All right, with that, we need a roll call.
Mr. Mortensen?
Oh, yes.
Thank you very much. Again, I think all of these conferences that we're attending is open to any board member. Joan doesn't specifically just say, you know, we, we all get the same email, if we're able to attend, we can attend, if we're not able, we're not, we can't make it, then we can't. And unfortunately, you know, there are some board members that can attend and can't. So it's not just limited to two individual board members on, you know, the other travel. With this one, Mr. Mortensen, I would really like to let everybody know that there are some resolutions, three important resolutions that are going to be discussed. The first one is the student count. As everybody knows, our student numbers have increased by, since the nineteen eighties, so that they still have the same count, so we need that changed, so there's a resolution for that, for the federal government to recognize the increase of students, Native American students. The second one is increase of funding. As you know, we're at a Stan's deal of a hundred and eighty-nine dollars right now per child, and we're wanting that increase, and again, that was, that was frozen back in the nineteen eighties. The third one is the blood quantum that we have as Native American people. Right now, the JOM recognizes a fourth-degree Native American blood, but we want to also include some lineage ancestry in there, we also want to have the certification of Indian blood to be recognized. So with those three resolutions, this is very important, there's a, there's a meeting before, and then this one also, so I just wanted to mention those, why, as you mentioned, Mr., we are currently the JOM board for our district, so thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. Next item is six F. Ms. Hanks, can you explain to us the Stride conferences exactly, so we can have a better idea on this?
Sure, President Mortensen, members of the board, Stride is one of our partners that we've been working with on several technological advances in programs that we're providing here at the district. Their annual conference often has innovative and new things that are coming out into the educational field, especially in regards to online education and data analysis, this is one of the partners we've been working with on our new data dashboard, so I do highly recommend this conference, it does have a lot of great information.
Makes a ton of sense. Generally speaking, it's an exciting weekend conference with Mr. Hyatt. Learn about education technology. Is there any questions down here? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion, please.
Motion to approve board members and superintendent to attend Stride Conference, Renton, Virginia, October 2024.
Second? Second by Mr. Long, roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell? Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. Mr. Mitchell, I'll allow you to propose an amended action item for six G, please.
Okay, like I said earlier, you know, I would like to amend this to any of the state championships that our district will be attending, I think it would be great, you know, if board members, we could be there to support our children, and instead of them just, instead of us just waiting for them to come back and say they won, you know, it would be better to be there and cheer them on, so.
We please make a substitute motion?
Substitute motion will be to change the, to take out basketball and just put, you know, any, all of the championships and playoffs.
Okay, all right, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Ms. Benali, roll call, please.
Ms. Benali?
Sorry. I'm sorry.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
No.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. Last item is a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second down there, roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.